The Governess, yeah, thank you. Thank you for attending the meeting of this Governess Committee and welcome. Please can I request that mobile phones and other such equipment are switched to silent so as not to disturb the conduct of the meeting? And there is no fire test planned today, so if there's an emergency evacuation, please take instruction from the staff and assemble in Tudor Square. I think we all know that. Can I ask people to introduce themselves? Thank you.
councillor Mike Levy, member for West Ecclestone Ward.
councillor Simon Clement Jones of Beechfield Green Ward.
councillor Diane Hurst from Richmond Ward.
Laura Moynihan councillor for Manor Castle.
Mike Chaplin councillor for Southie Ward and substituting for Sean Edmire Richards.
And the officers, please.
David Hollis, general councillor and monitoring officer.
Hi, I'm Laurie Brendan, I'm head of Policy and Partnerships.
Hi, Alice Nicholson, Politician Improvement Officer in Laurie's team.
Jay Bell, Democratic Service Officer.
Thank you. I have got some, a few apologies for absence.
Yeah, Chair, received an apology from councillor Fran Belbin. Councillor Sean Edmire Richards and councillor Mike Chaplin here as a substitute. Councillor Gary Wetherall and councillor Diane Hurst is here as his substitute and also councillor Alison Norris.
Thank you. Paul, would you like to introduce yourself?
I'm Paul Tepin, Green councillor for Gleamless Valley Ward.
Thank you. Item three is exclusion of public and press and there are no items that that relates to today. So item four is declarations of interest. Are there any declarations of interest? Okay, thank you. So item five, minutes of the previous meeting, that's from page nine. Does anybody have any issues to raise? Do you want me to go through it page by page? Page nine? Page 10? These are just the questions. Page 11? 12? 13? 14? Page 15? Page 16? Page 17? And the last bit. Can I take it then that these are agreed as a true record? Yes, thank you very much. So the next item on the agenda is public questions and petitions. We have received four questions from Ruth Hubbard. Two of these questions relate very directly to item seven on the agenda and one to item eight on the agenda, so they will be addressed at the start of each of those items. The fourth question wasn't directly related to this committee and Ruth will receive a written reply direct from the Chair of this committee from councillor Belbin. So we then move on to item seven. Item seven is the review of the policy committees and their remits. So the purpose of this item is to agree the outline for a committee, a working group, to look into this item from our work plan. Laurie, do you wish to take us through the report?
Thank you, Chair. I'll be very brief. This is a proposal which responds directly to one of the recommendations in the six month review of governance from last year, i.e. at that point the committee felt it wasn't appropriate to really look at the remits of committees. They were at quite an early stage of development and therefore it made sense to have spent a little bit of time letting them bed in. As we go into 2024, the proposal sets out an approach, an initial approach to undertaking a review of those committee remits as set out in the original governance review. What the paper suggests is that, it suggests some initial key lines of inquiry, particularly thinking about the workloads of the committees, the scheduling of committee meetings, how their responsibilities are met, thinking about particularly policy review and scrutiny, thinking about policy development and the role in decision making, thinking about the connection with the strategic context we're working in. So the development of the new draft council plan, thinking about the newer qualities framework and the sort of the strategic pieces of jigsaw we're putting in place in the council, how does that, how do the committee structures now relate to that and the remits of the committees? And also thinking about the lived experience of members and officers down over the last year. Some of that we gleaned through the research and evidence base for the six month review, which we will refer back to and make sure we use as part of this piece of work, but also then thinking about things we've learnt since, so including the relationship between policy committees and the local area committees and also things around how we're trying to develop our connection with citizens through the committee system as well. What the paper sets out is that Governess Committee has experience of operating as a whole committee task and finish group. There is an option here to have a small member working group, a task and finish group from Governess Committee to do this, to lead this work over the next 12 months. But what is suggested in here is it probably makes sense to operate as a full governance committee so that we bring member insight from across the parties but across Governess Committee as well, recognising there's already significant pressure on member workloads. So we've been pretty useful, I think, as a committee to recognise that we won't all make every single meeting, but recognising we've got that consistency across a longer term piece of work like this. And it also helps us go beyond into the next municipal year as well. As is suggested at 3.3, we'll try and use that existing evidence base we've got, but we will want to think about the design principles we originally put in place and also think about how we bring new voices into this. I'm not suggesting any sort of blanket approach to this, I think we can, members through the committee can decide and consider how best to do that depending on the issue at hand. So it might be something more pertaining to officers, it might be about members, it might be about citizens, but we find the right route for that. And then just finally, this is the initial paper, the proposal here and the recommendation is that members identify, discuss and agree the scope and consider what's written in here, to consider and agree the setting up of a task and finish group and then agree the composition for the proposed task and finish group for the next year. Obviously that will then meet first early in 2024 to look at the scope in more detail and set out something more rigorous, which we can then report back to this committee. Thank you.
Thank you very much. At this point, before I just move to comments, I'll just outline very briefly the questions that Ruth Hubbard posed to us about this item. You've all got the full questions and answers on your desk, and they will go in a minute. But just to say, the first question was around the aims and objectives of this committee and the importance of alignment with the design principles and considering new approaches and being clear that we include how the scrutiny of decisions is carried out. I think that is included in this paper. The second point was about the actual number of committees and the amount of, basically the spread of those committees, and I think again, that is also largely included in the remit identified in this paper. Do any members have any questions or comments? Diane?
Thank you, Chair. Yes, just a brief comment, I like the fact that you're not pulling it in too tight, Laurie, and that you're giving us scope for pulling on our past experience and the work that we've done then, because I think that is important. Some of us on this committee have been here a while, some of us are new members and we need that breadth. But I think we've also not got to forget all the lessons that we'd learned during the transition year and we're still trying to, we're still trying to bed down, I think, and it seems like if we do meet together as a whole committee, that would give us a chance to consider who else we need to involve and some of the questions we've had in the past about how do you involve communities in this and community groups of interest, and we've never really bottomed that and it might be a good place to have that discussion, because it's one of the things that I've always valued about the Governess Committee, we've had some very difficult decisions along the way, but we've had them from a, we've taken them from a position of we're coming together to solve this and resolve this issue. So more of a comment than a question, but thank you for hearing me out, Chair. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, Chair. A little bit of what Diane said, because this clearly links to the next paper on engagement and I think the two are inextricably linked. And there's something that doesn't come through here. It's an underlying fact which is around culture. The Involve Report talked very much about culture and the culture of the committees and how they engage with the public, with officers and with members and with the relevant departments is something that, you know, probably needs to be looked at as well. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, members, for the comments. I think they're really helpful and it was quite deliberate, they didn't want to nail the scope down too hard in the paper, because I think, I think we know from our experience in doing the transition through this committee and thinking about the six month review, it did iterate as we went through because we identified issues which then needed more time. And I think what the working group, sorry, the task and finish group might find is that there'll be issues you want to get into and some will become quite urgent early priorities, particularly where we can do things quickly to, you know, address them if there are particular issues. But of course, what we're not trying to do here is not a full review of the system, it's thinking about the policy, the committees themselves and their policy remits and about the things like whether things are in the right place and the right fit, but the culture and behaviours of each committee and what that enables them to do. So particularly thinking about, we know that from the start of this, we said really policy committees have got really three big jobs. One is decision making, one is policy development and the other one is scrutiny with a small S and review. And whether that balance is being struck is something I'm quite interested to see, because all those spaces then open up lots of opportunities and innovative opportunities for community involvement really. And there's different ways of doing that and I think we'll find different committees that operate in different ways, find different solutions, but that's the point of the review.
Thank you. Paul?
Thanks, Sue. Just echo what Diane was saying, it was certainly in my mind when it was the It's Our City campaign that more involvement from members of the public would be a good thing. And the other thing I was going to mention is that, although perhaps that's irrelevant after what you just said, Laurie, but I was just thinking about who do you go to, who's like the teacher you go to when it's not, when it's not been adhered to in the way that we set it out, you know? Who do you complain to? Who can hold the councillors to account?
Do you want to comment on that? There are two answers.
Well. I suppose, I'm responsible for ensuring that the constitution's complied with, so if that's the answer, Paul, that you wanted, but I don't know.
I suppose the other answer is the electorate. Anybody else want to make any comments? Okay. Just a very quick personal comment myself, which is really very much that I would see this as trying to, in its early meeting or two, to look at where we think the issues are and then to try and identify one or two of those issues to tackle quickly, basically to prioritise and then work through the others. But obviously the nature of this is that all the policy committees overlap and therefore we need to take that on. Okay, so at that then I will just review the recommendations and you can tell me if you're happy with them. So the recommendations are that we agree, discuss and agree the initial scope for the review of the policy committee remits in line with the recommendations of the six month review of governance arrangements. Agree to establish a dedicated task and finish group to lead the review of the policy committee remits from January 24. Agree the composition of the proposed task and finish group, which the suggestion is that that be a whole committee task and finish group. And finally, to agree to receive regular progress reports and developing propositions from the task and finish group over the course of the review. In other words, get regular feedback to this committee on a sort of formal and public basis. Are we all happy with those? Okay, thank you very much. Okay, so that takes us to item eight, which is the citizen participation and community involvement, good job I've got my people, identifying member leads. Laurie?
Thank you, Chair. This is quite an initial step and an early step based on the conversation we had at the last meeting around the citizen participation piece of work and the Involve Report. In the minutes of the meeting from last time, we committed to sending that report out to participants of the initial piece of work and that's happened as well, so we probably should keep that on record that that action's been completed and as we committed. This paper is the next little step on that road, which is to try and secure member involvement from across the parties but across, so we've got a cross party, cross policy committee working group in the council, so we've got some political leadership for driving that work forward over the coming year. So it doesn't, there's not a huge amount of detail in this report. What it does suggest is that it's really important that we get that cross party involvement and we find sufficient voices to have connections to all the policy committees, recognising they all operate in slightly different ways and we want to start embedding that learning and experience in the work we do around citizen participation going forward, but then also that we make sure that we're connected to things like local area committees. So having some representatives from members who are chairs or part or active in local area committees will be really helpful as well. What the paper sets out is this, is that the work going forward will not be led just by members, this is an opportunity to bring in citizens and stakeholders and VCF representatives into this piece of work. It's just us trying to identify members at this stage so we can get cracking in the new year. It also suggests that what would be useful is if members can nominate representatives by the end of, by the end of next week really, so that we know what the working group's composition is going to be and we can get that work underway in early 2024. So the recommendations are really aligned to that. So we're nominating some members from this committee, but also then members on this committee taking responsibility to have conversations with their groups and bring forward some names for me to sort of coordinate that after Christmas. Thank you, Chair.
Okay, thank you. Any comments or questions from members? Paul?
Thanks. I was just looking at the recommendations and nominate and agree a maximum of five governance committee representatives, so clearly there's four groups on this committee. So one group could have two representatives from this committee whilst the rest could only have one. And obviously there will be other members from outside this group in the recommendations. A maximum of two member representatives per group. I'm just wondering, I mean, it works fine for me because I'm the only green on this committee, but I just wondered if it might be a hindrance to some others that maybe a second member of somebody's group who is on this committee, they would like to be on that. You know, I just wonder if it's a little bit too refined and not loose enough to make us be able to populate this working group with enthusiastic individuals.
Do you, do you want me to answer? I'll answer as well. I mean, from a personal point of view, I think we should be a little bit flexible. There are people who are on policy committees and on governance committee, so, you know, it's not a mutually exclusive group. So I think we should take this as a steer and if we need to change it, because we've got somebody who is excluded by it, then I think we should bear that in mind. That's my personal opinion. I would rather have people who are keen to do it and a cross party representation than be very specific about numbers, but that's a personal opinion.
I was just going to say, I share that opinion, Sue, and I wonder if we need to change the recommendations or if you think that we're all right to go ahead as they are.
Anybody else got any comment?
Just to come back, I think I probably could be accused of trying to overengineer this a little bit and maybe overthinking it and therefore, you know, that is probably my job. But I think in this instance, yeah, keeping it agile, making sure we've got good representation. The critical thing is we've got cross party representation from keen members who want to be involved and we've got some eyes and ears in some of the different policy committees and the local area committees, because we've got a complex system, but people have got different experiences as councillors, but also have got sort of different passions around some of this as well. So we want like a coalition of the willing, if you will, to truly really support this work. So that would be great if you could. I don't think we need to overly think about the specifics and numbers. One thing I would say is don't make it too unwieldy because if there's too many members and then we have to think about citizen representation, you're suddenly talking about a really sizable group.
I'm of a mind, unless somebody else feels strongly that we should change it to leave it, and if we find that there's a problem, then come back the next time and amend it. But I But thank you.
I think, so long as there's the will to be flexible and that's on the record, because we don't want to find ourselves having pointless arguments down that, oh, you're not this member and you've never been sitting on here. We want people who want to come and contribute and we all have different strengths and it may be that people will dip in and will dip out. And that's what we want, isn't it? People who want to come and make a contribution to get to where we need to be and engagement in the end.
Simon?
Yeah, it's really a question of, because I'm considering putting myself forward for this, being a lack chair as well. So I'm just really wondering what sort of commitment I'm signing up to.
I think, I mean, that's to be defined, I think, in reality. I think the point here was to try and make sure we got the working group established and approved so we could commence the work in the new year, but it would be really good to have experienced lack chairs as well as part of this to just look and think about the connections in different parts of the city and the experience of connecting to communities in those ways. One thing I would suggest, I think recommendation two, if we wanted to change any recommendation, we could probably tweak that to make it more flexible, to reference the fact what we want is that sort of members with different experiences but also with a real passion to support this and drive this work forward. We don't necessarily need to be as specific, because I've made it in there potentially.
Any else? Sorry, Laurie?
Thank you, Chair. Mine's not about arguing about the membership of the group, mine's about the content of the report, which seems to me quite important. 2.3, you talk about engaging with the voices and networks in the city. Have we got, we've got a map of those, have we? And is, are there any clear gaps that we're missing?
It's a really good point and the intention of this paper was to not to describe like how we're going to do all that. We've got some really active and really vibrant community networks in Sheffield. We've just done a fantastic, we've been part of a fantastic piece of work on City Goals, which has kind of created a new, a network of collaborative conversations which connects into networks and using the obviously local area committees, which have got beyond the image of the committee itself, the community development and the activity that connects to local community organisations in those areas. We've got lots and lots of strengths in here. I don't think I've been trying to over define or over be prescriptive about what that looks like. One of the critical bits in here is that we need to look at where we've got networks, but also identify demographically, but also in terms of topography of the city, the geography of the city, to make sure that our communities and different people with different characteristic, different geographies are represented in here. And we just need to think that through, I think, afterwards. We've got lots and lots of vibrant networks, we have lots of those assets. And in the last meeting of this committee, we talked about making sure that we harness the real expertise and capacity in the city to connect into this work, because we definitely don't have all the answers on this one.
Any other comments or questions? Following the discussion, do we actually want, anybody actually want to change the recommendations? I'm just, we're checking if you're all happy.
If you're happy, I'm happy. As long as it's not going to hobble us to form this group, is my only concern, that, you know, like if there's two enthusiastic Libdums and two enthusiastic Labour, that they should be allowed, because ultimately that's realistically what it will come down to, isn't it?
I think it can be worked out. Okay, everybody happy then? Okay, so I'm just going to go through, quickly go through the recommendations briefly. So to nominate and agree a maximum of five governance committee representatives for the community involvement working group. To agree for governance committee leads to take back, basically to discuss with their groups and identify a maximum of two per group. So I'm assuming all groups are agreeing that they're going to take that away. And agree to receive a further paper early in 2024, setting out a proposed next step for this project. We're all happy? I think so. Excellent. Okay, thank you very much. Next item is, last thing. Item nine, which is an update on the review of the council's approach to public questions.
Thanks, Chair. Yeah, this is your ongoing task and finish group around the approach to public questions. The report suggests that you note the progress that's in there here and that you agree to this task and finish group continuing the work and bringing recommendations in hopefully early 2024. Can't believe that we're nearly 2024. I think the key is probably in questions of in 2.3.2, the closing statement where we want to ensure we give everything full attention, there might be constitution changes, different ways of operating and there could be some resource impact, so you need to give it that full attention. Therefore, it's not really a sensible point to conclude the review yet. And I think this was something one of, one of the group in here said, was that the review has actually begun bigger than we thought, but that's good, but it just needs more quality assessment and technical input to make it, you know, a useful product and deliverable. And I think you as members were all keen to make the point that you have listened and you actually want to do the right thing. So that sort of includes what's been said and maybe why you might not implement the suggestion. So it's just saying a little bit more work needs to be done on this to make it a quality product, just not at that place yet, which for those listening is actually quite a positive thing. You might not feel it, but it is.
Thank you. I've just spotted something which is a question and it's 213. Is that actually correct? Because I thought Paul was on.
I think you're right. I think apologies, Paul should be on there too. Sorry. It wasn't, it wasn't a deliberate omission, it was probably a, if I'm honest, in the middle of writing this got distracted. So yeah, we'll make sure that's in there.
Thank you. I just spotted it then. Okay. Any comments or questions from anybody?
Thank you. There are links clearly here again to the engagement agenda, because some aren't engaged. And I notice often the loudest voices are heard and marginalised communities don't participate. And I noted all the respondents in that graph that you did were predominantly older and white and I think that's something we've got to look at going forward really.
Yes, I might, Chair. I agree with that. And I feel some of this is about honing this down to being very much about how you change, how people perhaps answer, ask questions now, but you then also make some recommendations, I suspect, around that, exactly that, the linkages with involvement and the fact that the respondents to this are a kind of case study in who doesn't obviously seem to engage with us and how you might think about doing that and that then definitely falls you might think about doing that, and that then definitely falls into the involvement and participation work.
If I can just add, a lot of it is about using technology and the significant digital exclusion in the city, so that's another thing we need to bear in mind.
Thank you. Yeah, I think they're all issues that have been raised through the discussion and certainly will need to form part of the decision-making when we actually bring back formal recommendations to this committee.
councillor Moynihan's right as well, he's got strong links kind of back to the previous paper about the working group, because public questions being one quite visible part participatory route into democratic decision-making process in the committee spaces. But obviously, that needs to be complemented by multiple other things as well, and I think that's one of the things we need to get, we need to really think about as part of that working grouping on participation about the different value of different points and different routes in, but it's important in this context as well, absolutely.
Thank you. Anybody else wish to comment or ask anything on this? Okay, thank you very much. Can we just agree to, I think the recommendation is just that we carry on? So note the progress and agree for the task and finish group to bring recommendations to this committee early next year, having finished its work, hopefully. We're all agreed? Thank you. So next item is just the committee work programme. Alice, having had a long discussion about this last meeting.
It is. We have refined it for you, hopefully, a bit more and been a bit smarter in how it looks to you. So that's particularly pages, so mainly it's recommendation one, it's having a look at the suggested work programme, pages forty, forty-one and forty-two. It's still quite a long list, but if you look at that column that says proposed date, there's quite a few things in there which are ongoing, and we've refined how these things are referred to as well, and making it clear about the relationship between some of this work. So there's a lot you're doing, I think, at the moment, possibly not always visible in black and white reports. But, and then we've revised some of the timelines on page forty-one particularly, so citizen participation is very much about what you've just talked about, those task and finish group, and the other one, review of policy committee remits. There's still a few on page forty-two which are to be confirmed. I think conversations that have been had are suggesting that this still needs some work on it and that we need to understand what the impact is for yourselves and whether this actually belongs in some work for officers to do. So I'm conscious of those three, particularly, say, TBC, that that's about looking at prioritisation, what you're already undertaking as a committee, because you've got a lot on, and whether those are truly appropriate for this municipal year or urgent for this municipal year, and therefore, what else might not happen. None of them strike me as that, but I do think it's a conversation that needs to be had amongst yourselves as a committee, not necessarily at this point, because I think we probably need a bit of officer input on where some of these are at and how appropriate they are at this point in time, and whether work has been, enough work has been done, I think, amongst the organisation to be able to actually crack on with some of these.
Thank you. Any comments or questions? No? I'll just comment on that last bit. I think some recommendation as to whether we do need to put longer-term dates into any of those or whether any of them are urgent. I mean, we have now just agreed our fifth lot of working groups, and whereas a couple of them should be drawing to a close soon, that is a lot of work for the nine people on this committee. And I really think we've got enough projects ongoing at the moment without setting up any more.
Sue, I think that's the strength of this committee though, isn't it? Having served on this committee in the past, then dipped out for a while, then coming back in. The work programme, we made recommendations last year to the incoming committee, and it's carried through, and so we can make those longer commitments, because I think it's one of those committees that is genuinely committed to bringing about improvement. So if you have to set a longer-term date for a committee, I think that's perfectly acceptable. It's not the rush to get everything complete by March, because we have the long haul.
I would agree with that. There are no doubt a few things that have to be addressed, but a certain timeframe, but in general, it's about not wasting time but moving at a pace that we can. Any other comments?
Just on the urgent decisions work, I think it'd be useful to compare year one with the current year, because my sense is we aren't doing as many urgent meetings as we did in year one, so it gives good indications as to whether that's working on.
Thank you, Chair. I can take this away, because I think this might be one where there's almost like a paper that just does exactly what you said, looks at the data. From memory, and I'm looking at David, well, I might be wrong, the numbers in there are pretty small from the number of actual urgent decisions we do. It might be what that becomes is almost like a scheduled update to this committee once a year or something, so you've got an oversight of what's happening, because I don't think it needs a long piece of work and a detailed item, because I suspect there's not a lot to see, but let's bring that back on that timeframe. It's not a big piece of work, I don't think.
That sounds very sensible, because unless it's becoming a massive commitment for the council, then I think we can just...
I think we've had one.
Right, I think one we can cope with. Okay. Okay, any further comments? Okay, so are we agreed and happy with the work plan as it is set out? Okay, we'll take that as accepted. So that just leaves me with, this is interesting, I've got item ten work plan, item twelve next meeting. What's item eleven? Item eleven's a mystery item. Item twelve is just date of next meeting, which is the seventeenth of January. How did that happen so quickly? And I think that's all the formal business for today, unless I have missed anything. Please tell me. Okay, in that case, thank you very much.